Okay. I now call order the November eighth, twenty twenty-two, regular meeting, the Republican Board of Trustees, time being six thirty-one. Please rise. But believe in the United States. And we're a republic, religion, and one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and every its own. And roll call, please.
Trusty Gator.
Here.
Trusty Daley.
Okay.
Trusty Mason.
Here.
Trusty Tees.
Yeah.
Trusty Regan.
Here.
Mayor from Temecan. Mayor Shosey.
Here.
Are there any amendments to the agenda this evening?
I do have one. I would like to pull item number three, the contract by Crassial Street Maintenance Services offer present agenda and on to the regular agenda items.
Mayor, a second.
Oh, second. We've never had seconds before.
I would.
We have it. It's always just been requested to trust to get out of Caribbean. But if there is a need a second, I'm happy to second that.
I don't think we usually go a second.
Okay.
Hold that. Any other minutes? Uh, any complex of interest related to. All right, now we'll move on to public comment. Item B one. Public comment. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items are asked to sign up at the podium. Uh, when employed, please state your name for the record, and you will be limited to three minutes during public time.
Hi Karen, I'm from the Moles. Um, I just wanted to get up and say, um, my son Sawyer, who's thirteen, went volunteered, um, on set. On Saturday, um, for the pancake breakfast for the veterans of the Avon Clark area. And just when he came home, he can't be here tonight, but, um, I had to mention it. When he came home, the look on his face and the stories he was telling me about the men and women that he met. And just the whole atmosphere there of people wanting to serve those that were veterans and. Um, he said he got to see our sheriff, Justin Smith. He was too scared to walk up and talk to him, so a bunch of other people around him, but he said it was just an amazing thing to him. Um, that he got to see people and serve with other people in our community, and especially for veterans. And my son was almost in tears, um, telling just the amazing atmosphere that was there. And the meeting camaraderie there in between, um, all the residents, but especially people. I mean, they're, I guess, veterans that are being helped by like six or seven people. They figure that they want to buy, and then somebody come up and say, hey, can I show anything? And I thought that was absolutely amazing. So I just wanted to say that was a really great event and a really great piece for my son having his. Memory bank to remember the veterans and just serve those who are around us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on to the consent agenda. Consisted of the meeting minutes of October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. And. Our request for a special meeting on November fifteenth. Make a motion to approve. So. May I give a second?
Okay.
Make a roll call, please.
Trusty Gator.
Yes.
Trusty Daley.
Yeah.
Trusty Mason.
Yes.
Trusty Tees.
Yes.
Trusty Regan.
Yes.
Mayor Shosey.
Yes. Um, with the consent and the item being pulled, should we address that first or last?
From what I understand, that usually goes to the end of the agenda.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, first, I'm on. The agenda, actually, tonight is going to be the memorandum of understanding with the Wellington Main Street Program, which will be presented by. Devin Martin.
Good evening. I am here this evening just to present the memorandum, memorandum of understanding for the Main Street Program, and it is, um. A culmination of, as you know, hours and months of work from our trustees. And the Main Street Programming and staff of the town. This has been reviewed through DOLA. Through our town attorney, through our board, and, um, Gail Langley with DOLA is here. Um, on the Zoom this evening, if we need to ask for any questions. Um, but I just wanted to kind of highlight a few items on this and then be available for questions for you. The first thing I wanted to just kind of go through this. And it is an agreement between those three entities through, uh, DOLA with the Colorado Main Streets Program. Yourselves, the Town of Wellington, and the Main Street Board. And in this, this does outline that the Main Street Board is going to retain a board of directors. And that is going to be a board that's going to manage the five oh one C three nonprofit piece of the not of the Main Street Program. And that through this, this would also be asking, or excuse me, an agreement that. The town would be providing that program manager. To manage that, uh, the Main Street Program in compliance with the DOLA requirements. And then, um, in following in alignment with the National Main Street of America program. Couple of those items, I just wanted to point out, uh, just that I thought they were important. Those are one of the very first sections, section A, number seven. In regards to the program, um. With the program is that this is still allowing us to have access to the mini grants through DOLA. In the past, just as a quick reminder, some of those mini grants have been used for murals, flower planters, and items like that. So that stays there, that access to the mini grant for, uh, dollars. And right now, with the graduate status that the Wellington Main Street Program currently has, that equals out to about ten thousand dollars a year. We have not utilized this year's award, so that can be, you know, added on, um, and utilized in the future. So there are some significant funds that can be used for some projects or programs if we, uh, put the designate those to be, those dollars to be used that way. Another item that I just wanted to point out on here is that this does allow for, uh, two distinct. Uh, geographical areas that the Main Street Program can now serve. And one is the specific area that the. Main Street Program has now are our district boundaries. And then the second is, um, expanding that out to the businesses throughout the town of Wellington. So I know that those were important items, so I just wanted to point out that that is still, that is in this MOU and will continue to be a priority for the program, um. Really for. Another item I just wanted to point out here as well is that this does allow for consultant dollars to be provided for through DOLA. And some of those consultant dollars in the past have been used for strategic, uh, strategic, excuse me, strategic planning, grants. Uh, advising and writing our grants. And we have already identified some funds for twenty twenty-three for some strategic planning for the program, um, moving forward as well. Um, there is one item on here that I do want to bring up, and that is that, uh. It, it does ask for a financial commitment by the town in the support of this program, and I wanted to address that. And in this capacity, what we're asking for is not just specifically a direct dollar amount that you would say, oh, here's X number of dollars for the Main Street Program. But these dollars could be anything from. We are writing a grant that is going to be beneficial to our entire community. There is a matching component. Maybe we are asking for some specific dollars at that point, and how can we manage those funds? Um, but obviously planned out as well. Uh, but it also could be things such as the, uh, Main Street Program, you know, does the Main Street market. And we ask to utilize the park for that market, and that is typically eight to twelve weeks out of the summer. There's generally a fee, and I understand that's been, um, waived in the past, but that would be also an example of that financial support of the program. So those are just a couple of items I wanted to point out because I knew that they were points that we discussed previously and just. Let you ask any questions in my hand. Awesome. Thank you. You're welcome.
Um, before we begin, I just want to let everybody on the trustee board know, um, since we have so many items to go through, I'd like to keep comments to three minutes, so I will have a timer going. Uh, we'll start with trustee Mason.
I absolutely, I think it's a great, um, obviously, your guys' contribution to Wellington is extraordinary, and I think that's, you know, why we're here considering this memorandum. Um, I, I like that you guys have very, uh, very much lined it out, what the different responsibilities are going to be between the Main Street Program Manager. Uh, the Colorado Main Streets Program, Wellington Main Streets, as well as the town of Wellington. So I thought that was very impressive that you guys had all those lined up. Um, the idea that this is going to save us, you know, forty thousand dollars in the long run, uh, considering what are you doing that for, uh, you know, the, the, the current person that's doing that. Um, I think this is nothing but a good thing, and, uh, I certainly think we'd like to have your guys' support, and certainly, I think the town's behind us.
Uh, trustee Regan.
Oh, just got it. Got a couple quick. There, yeah, for the town project manager there. Uh, how are you going to be utilizing him? Is, is whoever we hire, is that going to be the coordinator for all the events that you're putting on, or is he just kind of the overseer?
You know, those specific items can be handled, I think, in a number of ways. Uh, my expectation at this point is that. With the number of hours that we've allocated, there should be a fifty percent of this individual's role, so approximately twenty hours a week. A lot of that is going to have to be, you know, those duties are going to have to be split between that program manager and the volunteer board. Um, in, in figuring out how those duties can be managed, so that way those hours are maintained at that level for the town staff person. But then we still have that, um. Involvement from our board. So specifically on an item, I, I can't really answer that, but, uh, kind of overall, it's really going to have to be a collaborative effort.
Yeah, I know. One of the big parts, if and when we hire this person here, is for community development, economic development, so we make sure that we have plenty of room and time for that. I think that's extremely important. And, uh, you know, we get this person, I mean, he's just an event coordinator. It's probably not going to do everything that we really want done, but again, as long as we keep it fifty fifty, I think that's going to be a good use of its time.
And. Trusty Regan, uh, uh, I'd like to address an item that's in this, um, memorandum of understanding, just to get some clarity, I think, on the point about how, how that person's going to be used. And down in where it discusses the roles and responsibilities of the town, and the town's commitment here. Uh, one of the key things we tried to hear in this memorandum of understanding was delineate. Who that person reported to, first of all, and, and down in the town's. Responsibilities. That person is supervised and been owned by the town. And so in making sure that that person has a fifty fifty responsibility of supporting Main Street and has a commitment to their role, but also is able to do. What they need to do for their other duties of them.
Right.
I'm definitely addressing here as the town supervises that person, um, and then they.
And that's the end, kind of, for the board. Uh, Ms. Garcia. Mayor.
Either myself or someone in my department could call in to tell you openly, um, Raven Hallie, that Sheldon, when she comes back. Um, but we have heard you loud and clear about the need for economic development and understand that that needs to be a big piece of that position once we fill it again.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Trusty Tees.
Yes, I'm excited to see that this came in. Think we're definitely well laid out in understanding responsibilities of who's doing what. I only have a, a few concerns. One, of course, is the discussion of the subject to appropriations. The town will provide financial support for programming, projects, and grant matching. So what I'm concerned about is we just went through our twenty twenty-three budget. There's no funding allocated, so that is a concern for me. Um, that I saw anyways in any of our budgeting. The other issue that I noticed is in the terms and other conditions, line item B. This is an indefinite contract.
Correct.
And I'm not comfortable providing an indefinite contract. We had this indefinite issue with, correct me if I'm wrong, but our water as well, where we find indefinite contracts. That can't be changed. Um, but then it states here in line C that the agreement may only be amended if all parties are in an agreement. So you have to have all parties in an agreement to even amend this contract. So if it's not working out, or the next board, the trustee decides that this is something they don't want to do, how do they move forward with that? But please.
That is absolutely a discussion that we had during the entire discussion of this memorandum of understanding. Um, and the, the language that you highlighted, the subject to appropriations, um, that's sort of like. Confuses the sort of catch-all phrase, um, in government contracting, and essentially what it means is. The board agrees to these things, however. All of this is subject to you appropriating those dollars, and so number C in particular, uh, provide financial support, um, for programming projects and grant matching. Um, by saying subject to appropriations, largely that's saying that the aspiration is the town believes that it will support those things, however, not in the budget. That's part of this agreement, so, um, and that also comes back to the term being indefinite. Yet the term is. There is no commitment in five years to provide X number of dollars. In five years, this agreement will exist, however, even in five years, the town's financial commitment will be subject to appropriation. So the idea was to have an agreement that lasted a long time, but have some room for the board to make, have discretion in how much you want to support it and give it your name to the budget process.
Just a link to where. Vacation on the agreement pieces, just to make sure I understand, um, on, under the terms and conditions, it says, be this term. The term of this agreement shall begin on January first, twenty twenty-three, and remain in place until and unless terminated by any party. So that says that if the town chooses to stop it, they can do that at any time, correct?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, there, there's rules and dates and stuff like that, so it's, while there's not a, it ends on this date, the town can choose to say, hey, okay, thank you.
You know. Ten seconds left, trustee Tees.
So my final concern is, is if we're taking this under our general liability insurance. We are accepting the responsibility of whatever is done or chosen. What I'm worried about is, is this might greatly limit the events that Main Streets does post, because when it comes under town general liability. There's a lot of things that fall under that. So will they be falling under all of the rules and ordinances of the town?
I guess I, I, I know, you said, will they be following under all the rules and ordinance? Anything that Wellington Main Street says has to comply with. Town ordinance is certainly that's not in town. Uh, regarding insurance, you know, SERSA is our, is a town's insurer, and, um, they provide, um. Very good insurance program for events, and so I'm not sure the extent to which our insurance is, or those events for Main Street, so.
And we will still maintain, because we only have, we still maintain a five oh one C three nonprofit board. That nonprofit board still has to carry their own budget, their own insurance, board insurance. So there will still be additional protections there as well. Without having an agreement in place. I don't have all the details from our insurance agent as to how we can manage those and make those work and collaborate directly with. What would happen if we were to go under the town, but we do have a meeting set to discuss that in the event that this, this agreement does come to fruition. But we're not, the Main Street Nonprofit Board is not eliminating all insurance. We do still have that responsibility. Um, because we carry that five oh one C three stamp. Does that help?
Yeah, it wasn't kind of my question, my, my, it was more of a worry of mine that I'm worried that it's going to greatly limit what. You guys can do as far as events do go on and happen if you fall under the town's ordinances, rules, fractures.
Um, I'll be able to clarify.
Trusty Tees, can you bring your microphone up?
Oh, thank you.
Um, I believe they already have to fall under all those, and so there would be no change.
The Main Streets Program still has to apply to all event permits and all those processes, which they've done existing, and those ones that ensure that they do. Fire code items, and we all are required to the town, provide appropriate documentation. That process has already been in place, I would not be changing. For that.
I'll check out. Okay, thank you.
Trusty Gator.
Yes, so just had a couple of questions on that, and I think the answer to some of my questions about the appropriate funds, the financial obligation, so thank you for speaking to that. Um, and so the one piece I had is it talked about the required trainings and conferences, and I know we do a lot of professional development. I don't know that we have any agreements for wire employees to go to things, so I didn't know, is that something that was put in? Is that a requirement of DOLA, or am I just trying to understand that piece?
These, uh, those are trainings are requirements to be in Main Street programming. And they're, um, those are required through DOLA, and, um, they're a piece of that National Main Street of America. Historically, we have, uh, bought for and received some grant funding to supplement some of those training costs. Um, doesn't necessarily always cover a hundred percent of those costs, but the majority of them.
What have those costs typically? So if you look at what's the raw cost, the four any grants, and then after the grants, what has that typically been?
Um, depending on the year, so for example, last year, we had a twenty-five hundred dollar grant, and I think we sent twenty-one hundred dollars of that grant, so no money came out of the Main Streets Program for that. This year, we have not applied for, um. Let me brush my memory, thank you. Um, we did apply for some funding for the national conference. And, um, so that airfare and hotel was covered, but our. Colorado Summit that just occurred last week, there was money in our, in our, in our budgets, so we've not applied for funding from DOLA to cover that. And that was for hotel row and, uh, five or two individuals to attend.
Okay, so.
And so that came to about five hundred dollars.
Five hundred, okay. So is it typically the requirement for the trainings, are those typically the ones that we're going to, local, or are we required to go to the national one, or?
Yes, we do need to attend the national one, and that's, that is an annual, and, um, typically that twenty-five hundred dollar grant allocation. Over ninety percent did not work at that. The local ones. Now, the last couple of years with COVID, they've been more, you know, all online, so there's been no costs, so. I'm also going back in memory banks for about three years to where all those dollars are. Um, but the state ones, so for example, this year was held in Victor, Colorado, so that's just south of, um, the Biden. And which is just left of Colorado Springs. Um, and it was just for one night, so.
There's another question, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Uh, we, Gail does have her hand raised.
Yes, um, please.
Are you comfortable with us promoting?
Yeah, go, go for it.
I ju- I just wanted to say about the scholarship funds, um. That was a five-year grant agreement that runs from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five. And there was money put in it for five years in order to do the required trainings that we ask, and as Anita pointed out. That's to attend the National Main Street Now Conference and to attend the annual summit. Because of a few years where everything was virtual, that money has been banked. And really, we, next year, the national conference is going to be held in Boston. That will be expensive. I mean, who are we kidding? But there should be sufficient funds in there where no money comes out of the town's budget to do the trainings that we require.
Thank you, Gail.
Thank you. Um, trustee Daley.
Uh, first, I want to commend you for all the work and how much time. I probably don't know how much time you spent on this, but I've seen portions of that, so thank you for doing that. Um, the fact that this MOU's come before us and has, um, the support of the Main Streets Board. Uh, it means a lot. That program is so significant in the town of Wellington. Um, we talk all about the grants that you guys have helped attract and secure for the town. Um, and that's, of course, amazing, but I don't want to. Take away from all the other work that the Main Street Program does, uh, regarding community, getting people to be identified as Wellington. And encouraging them essentially to spend their money and love their town, so I think that work is more worthy, even in my mind. So I appreciate this program so much, and I loved it even in the model of what it was. But now we've come up with a solution that I see before me that makes it more efficient for every single part involved. So less money spent and more benefits. Um, so for a program that's essential to our town to continue and succeed with more collaboration, uh, decreased expenses. And way more opportunities, I think, is amazing. Um, and I love that the Main Street Board is so dedicated, of course, to town of Wellington and working with us, so. Um, I really, really appreciate everything that's put in here, and I do want to bring it up regarding, um. We, we talked about the, the terms of the MOU for a long time, and as, should we put a dollar amount in there as to the financial contributions? And absolutely not, because that is the will of the board at the board, at the time of whatever board there is. So those appropriations are what really matter. If we were to put a dollar amount in the MOU. That could conflict with what the city board would want to do, so that's why it was specifically left out of this agreement, so that it would be within the power of the budget. So that's the, the, the more important, uh, reference there. And then also regarding the terms of the agreement, how long it would last, we went back and worked about this until we, uh, came up with a solution. I think that went through all the final checks. And it makes the most sense that if a, a change were to occur, it needs to be, uh, agreed on by everyone, but at the same time, it can be terminated, um, with proper notice. So that is. An option, but the whole purpose and major benefits of this MOU brings is that they'll be more, um, a more sustainable position for the staff. That will be supporting as the, the manager here versus someone who from year to year is not quite sure if the program was going to continue in its current way that it's operating. Uh, would be more substantial, more consistent, and then that way we'd be able to seek much more. Talented staff that wants to have that position for an extended period of time and other, so, thank you.
Um, yeah, I, I really like this agreement. You guys put a lot of effort into it, um, and if I'm not mistaken, Monument uses something very, very similar, and there's successful programs working well for their entire town. Um, so I look forward to, to being able to broaden the scope of what Main Streets can do for our town. And, um, you know, save us money and, and allow the board to, you know, uh, prove anything that we need to do financially, so I like how you guys left that open. Um, I appreciate everything you've done and, uh, really look forward to moving forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gail, did you have anything for closing?
Yes, I did. Um, I just wanted to commend all of you for working together so collaboratively. On trying really, really hard in understanding of what the Wellington Main Street Program. Offers and gives to your town. Um, this is a solid agreement. Um, we can go back and forth if we need to on a few small tweaks or changes. But the fact that you guys really see the value of this, and you have used it and, you know, embraced it. In the Wellington Main Street team and program. It, they're functioning at a graduate level, and they should be. And we're here to support the town, and we're here to support you in any way that we can. And I just want to commend all of you for being so thoughtful. In bringing this to this particular point tonight for discussion, and thank you for letting me say a few words.
Thank you, Gail. Any comments from the public on this agenda item? Make it a motion and a second on this agenda item.
I'm going to approve the memorandum of understanding as opposed.
My second. May, or are there any further comments from the board? Or direction from the board trustee upon this agenda?
Uh, I did just want to point out there, trustee Regan Sanity on page eighteen, key point number one is exactly what you're looking for there.
Thank you.
Again, I appreciate all the hard work that the, uh, board has done on that. Uh, you've done a great job and looking forward to it. Thank you.
There are no further comments. Make a roll call on the motion.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee, trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Trustee Teets?
Yeah.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. I got some, uh, paperwork I want to hand out now. So, we're done.
Thank you.
All right, then. The, uh, next item will be presented by Megan Smith, uh, Deputy Director of Public Works, capable of presenting ordinance number sixteen dash twenty-two in ordinance adopting the twenty-twenty-three proposed water and wastewater capital investment fees. Miss Smith.
Mayor and trustees, thank you. Megan Smith, Deputy Director of Public Works. I don't have a presentation for you this evening or a PowerPoint presentation anyway, um, as we did go through uh, much of the detail in detail at our last, um, meeting. I do, um, we did have a packet, uh, materials though that did summarize, uh, where we've been, um, summarize the proposals for the, uh, water and sewer capital investment fee, uh, updates. Um, and I'm here to answer any questions that may have come from that or clear up any information that you made on this topic.
Okay, we will start with trustee Gator.
I don't have any further questions. I just do know that, um, the cost of service three, uh, I think the people who are promoting that were primarily me and, uh, trustee Wigan. So, I know she's not heard that at the time of this time right now. So.
I know that this ordinance first that we're looking at is just the capital of that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
I got stuck on this.
Sorry.
Starting over?
Trustee Gator. Uh, Neil, I did want to say thank you for providing the breakdown of us in kind of comparison with the other, um, counties and while we are higher than that, it, you know, people talk all the time like we're not, yes, for some people like we're columns, but you look at the other surrounding towns, we're not that much higher with these changes. So.
No, and I know, I know a couple of these communities firsthand are gonna, they already have things moving forward. Yeah, we'll speak to them.
I, I know we're going up, but we're not the only ones. So, it's, I, I've talked to other elected officials and it's not just us that's being here with us. Um, and I just wanted to make sure, like, so we've talked about in the past and when putting these crates together, that the goal is that these fees will begin to cover all the costs of paying for the loans and future expansion. Is that correct? Understanding that that goal is that the cost of that is of the extension moving forward, especially once we finish that, we can start to build a little bit more will be covered by these capital investment.
Yeah, that is what was embedded in that, the modeling effort.
Perfect.
Trustee Teets?
I am extremely grateful that you represented what the residents asked. So, in looking at this and looking at a lot of other towns and the idea that we as a board sit here and say that new development needs to pay its way, residents can't carry the weights of new development. I think this is an epitome of what that looks like and you've done what the trustees and the residents here in our town have asked. I'm always concerned about the increase on the commercial costs, just because it's hard to follow your strategic plan when you're increasing cost to high amounts to encourage commercial to come here. Um, but at the same time, again, this is the method that's designed to recover the cost as exactly as it states. So, I'm grateful to everyone that was involved that helped us together.
Thank you, trustee.
Trustee. I appreciate having you live today and, uh, I love the comparison from the communities. And, um, yeah, we need to have everybody pay their own way and I think you guys have done a great job. So, appreciate it.
Thank you. Trustee Smith?
Pretty much everything that everybody else has said. You guys have done a great job on this and, uh, I'm excited to get down the road on it. So.
Trustee Gator? So, I had one additional question. Then I know in some of the rates, we've had multiple tax sizes residential beyond three-quarter, but we only have the one three-quarter. Is that just because moving forward, we will not be building anything other than three-quarter inch tax for residential?
Yes, and there, there, it, there would have to be some very unusual special circumstance that would go through some off the side of
Okay.
kind of calculation if that were to
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to confirm that because I really was like.
Yeah, it's pretty reasonable that there are even
Right.
those anomalies now and they're, it's, they're small.
Okay, perfect. That was one of the questions. Thanks.
Yeah, absolutely.
I appreciate all the hard work, um, you and your team, your rock stars. Um, a lot of time and dedication has gone into this and, uh, it's been a long journey. So, it's cool that in front of us. So, um, that's all I have to say. I appreciate you and everybody involved. Uh, um, so, yeah, thank you. Are there any comments from the public on this agenda item? No. May I get a motion and a second?
Move that we approve ordinance number sixteen dash twenty-two and ordinance adopting twenty-three proposed water and wastewater capital investment fees.
Thank you.
Are there any final comments from the board on this item? There are no further comments. May I get a roll call on the motion?
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Trustee Teets?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, we will have ordinance number seventeen dash twenty-two and ordinance adopting a point point three proposed water and wastewater usage rates. Miss Smith will be presenting on this item as well, uh, the ordinance adopting the point point three proposed water and wastewater usage rates. Miss Smith.
Thank you very much. Um, so again, I don't have a presentation. I will say though, this, uh, packet material was a little more robust, but definitely were off considerations to be had. We did go with the easy one first. Um, I do want to just essentially outline that we did come with, with three um, very similar, though not the same, for sure ordinances, um, listing out, um, water insurance rates options for all classes within the town. Um, I'm happy to step through the description. If, if, if we need to review some of that, I'm also happy to just jump to your questions. Um, as I feel like there might be more on this one, on this topic. Do you have a preference, mayor?
Um, I mean, we'll just go around and see what, soon we come over.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Trustee Wigan? None of you. Trustee Teets?
Really no questions. I, I pretty much exhaust my questions through regular emails to you. So, apologies for the emails, but also at the same time, making sure I have plenty of knowledge to do the right thing is huge for me. Um, the only thing I will say is I still do notice the difference in doing the math, um, running it at twenty-five K usage through all of the platforms. It still looks like residential is doing almost double what the rest of multifamily business and the commercial irrigation does at the twenty-five thousand gallons. Um, but it's my understanding through the email that came earlier that residential usage is about eighty percent of what commercial irrigation and multifamily is, correct?
Yes, it's, residential is about eighty percent of the total volume used in the town.
Got it.
Single family goes down to that really.
Got it. I don't have any other questions.
Trustee Gator?
I did have a couple of questions. Um, the first one is on the cost of service number three. Um, option was presented. I know in the memo it states that it would be tiered in or not in seventy-five percent versus a hundred percent. But when I actually look at the, like, the rates, the irrigation rate is at sixty percent and the commercial rate is seventy-two percent of what it is in cost of service number one scenario. So, I'm just trying to understand if it's supposed to be tiered in at seventy-five percent, why the rates are only coming at sixty percent and seventy-two percent.
It's not a linear relationship, would be the basic explanation. So, it's not there. It's more than just a single input that shape that varies with that. So, it doesn't have that exact change, but and, and actually, in order to get to the full cost of service recovery over the same timeframe, then the increase that would happen the following year would probably get you slightly above what uh, just five percent increase that's proposed now that we have in the plan for twenty-twenty-four, that rate would actually be higher than what next year's rate is currently proposed to be. Does that make sense? Because it would get some back the, um, so if for the tiered rate and we, um, or excuse me, the phased-in approach, so seventy-five percent of the cost of service were covered, um, in twenty-twenty-three with the other up to a hundred percent in two thousand and twenty-four, the overall five-year study span is kind of what all of this analysis was based on. And so, it's based on getting to the same point in twenty-twenty-seven. And so, in order to do that and make up that difference of the, the rates being less in twenty-twenty-three, at some point in the future, there's still gonna have to be more than they would have been proposed. In order to make it by twenty-twenty-seven, we have still recovered all the same amount of, of funding needed based on the modeling developed. Does that make a little bit of sense? If we're not getting it now, we have to get it later.
Right. So, if we do a smaller increase under cost of service three now, there would be attend, most likely a higher than everyone else would see a five percent of the commercial would have a higher than that because they have to get to the five percent plus that missing twenty-five percent that we didn't do this year.
That's exactly right.
Um, so, no, that was the one question I had. Um, thank you for sending over that information earlier today. I appreciated having that. Um, but one other thing that I said, I know I mentioned I was okay with options number one and number four on the commercial rates, um, as I took some time to really go through that. Um, if you look at our rest and the, the cost recuperation comes from those who are using more water, right? So, if I'm using more water, then I would have to pay more burden than someone using less. The challenge that I've seen as I was going through this, if we were to go with option number four, the individualized rate, let's say that I'm a business who, you know, normally uses three thousand gallons of water, um, then I would be looking at, you know, twelve twenty-two, but if we, if I just can say five thousand gallons, I would be paying eighteen dollars per gallon for those additional two gallons versus someone who's using hundreds of thousands of gallons, but only you paying, you know, twelve. So, it kind of flips things on its head and it really punishes the smaller commercial users. So, I would not feel comfortable with option number four. I prefer to just stick with option number one.
Trustee Gator?
I, and I did want to talk about that option four for, um, commercial. Uh, and the reason why is I know that one of the main drivers of the goals of reviewing our all of our rates here was to enforce, of course, the, the part about classes painter. I know that that was a big part of it. I know that that's built into every single one of these models. So, that is given, but the other part was the equitable side. Um, when we applied that to residential, there was really obvious essential use for household for residential. That was easy to understand what their essential use is and it's, they're, they're modeled for the rates, right? And that's been acknowledged and is including all of our options, because we're trying to do an equitable option that includes to make sure that everyone has essential use. And then if they go above and beyond that, they realize that they need to pay for the noise that they use. It's gonna give me, so, but we didn't apply that to businesses. So, at the whole point of doing, reviewing these rates is to change it to be equitable, yet we're not providing that essential use argument and model to businesses. Then are we really accomplishing our main driver and goal of redoing rates? And then the way that we discovered to, to find essential use for businesses is the option four, because businesses differ so much significantly from one to the other. The way that they operate, the products they sell, the services they provide are different. It's not a household of three versus household of five. It's like not, it's not that kind of difference. It's completely different level that we can acknowledge to a specific bucket of the but the quote next best thing to understand what essential use is for each business is to buy what you know their stroke of use. And so, I really commend our staff for finding this as an option, because this is the only solution I've seen to apply to businesses, the same equitable argument for essential use that we're providing to residential. So, um, and uh, so I really think that that should be considered. Um, and I think it's important and above and beyond everything, it is a method to encourage commercial uses every year to use the same old last water from here until as long as this rate structure exists. Um, so I think that that is the encouragement that we're again trying to accomplish to be great. So, if we don't apply those same arguments, the same methods that we give residential to commercial, then I think it's unfortunate that we go through this whole rate structure process without applying that to everything. If we're trying to do a sweeping across the board, change the whole rates, so we should use that as well. So, I think that's what makes sense to me. Uh, regarding cost of service three, I, I know that, uh, Mayor from town with gobbles and I only wanted to recommend that. I know she's not here today, but, uh, I, that's not a standing place for one. So, I wanted to get that there.
Trustee Smith?
Um, I am still in support of cost of, cost of service option one as well as commercial option one. Um, I, again, I'm, I'm not necessarily opposed to commercial option four, but I think, uh, again, to what trustee Gator had pointed out, and I think what we had discussed last time was that, you know, there's on, uh, I believe it was forty percent of businesses are using less than four thousand gallons of water and one percent is still.
I don't remember that since that conversation.
Okay.
Station. I don't remember the number.
No worries. Um, I guess the bigger point, uh, and again, it's the same point that I made last time, which is that if the, the, the for option one, the first tier is zero to twenty-five thousand gallons. Pretty sure that is going to cover a significant number of our businesses in town. And being that it's eleven-seventy-two versus twelve twenty-two under the AMC or average monthly consumption rate, it seems to me that we'd be doing a better service for our smaller businesses to go with the options one tier ready. Um, so that's, that's where I'm at.
Mayor, may I really? So, I took the recommendation that, um, trustee Mason was discussing and I did do the math and he is correct. At even the twenty-five K usage, at the option one, they're looking at about two-hundred-and-ninety-nine. But at the option four, and it only, the gap only gets bigger as I added more water to it, they're looking at three-twenty-nine fifty-seven. So, it actually is way more cost-effective with the forty percent of businesses being under that three thousand. We would be doing a disservice to the small businesses to have that water amounts be higher in charge. So, I think it'll put a, the greater strain on businesses, small businesses that are using less, because they'll have to pay more under this option four when they're not using that amount. So, that I think is more equitable when we're looking at what they're actually using compared to what it was gonna actually cost in that option four.
Thank you.
Oh, also, I'll just real quick. As far as comparisons, there is a, a chart in your packet that does have several usage scenarios under all of the both existing and, and the multiple rate options available. So, that's there.
There's a thirty-seven in the packet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, page four, page forty-two in the packet.
Um, yeah, I mean, uh, where I'm standing, I'm, I'm with trustee Mason and option, I like option one. Um, so, obviously, we have these three ordinances. We as a board kind of discuss which one we want to kind of settle on and then we can open up the public comment.
Uh, my proposal, I didn't know if you want to do a public conference, not my proposal would be to move forward with, uh, pursuing ordinance number seventeen dash twenty-two, um, one thousand. That would be my, and as I do want, I'm happy to make that a motion or.
Yeah, I mean, they might as well. I, I moved that we adopt ordinance seven, or no, we need my public comment. But we as a board, you can, okay, consensus can work.
Before I hit public comments, that you're also a report. Discussing that, I want to highlight that, uh, the ordinance that's in the package has an effective date, thirty days of publication and we want to make sure we do a, a motion that we amend that, so it becomes effective January first, which, which is, was always the intent to just didn't quite get it there. Um, bother the back, um, redo it one more time, cut that. So, before we get a motion, um, we'll have also the residential.
Got it.
To reflect that problem.
Okay, got it.
Uh, trustee Daly?
That sounds like, that sounds like.
That sounds like that sounds like
Yep, I mean. Okay, now we'll move on to public comment and public comment on the event.
Hi Karen, I've got all the notes. Um so I remember coming to the last meeting where we were talking about these different options. And it was said by trustee that if um the person uses two thousand gallons and there's just one person living in that house, then they should not have to pay as much as like eight or five. Um people in a house would have to pay because everyone uses more water. Um so when I when I looked over option four and I see that that we're not gonna penalize a smaller household that used less water. But it seems in option four, we're gonna penalize small businesses who don't use as much water. And I don't think that's a quality at all. Um it's penalizing the smaller businesses that don't use that water. Um and then I know none of you have mentioned option three, but I really want to say how bad option three would be because that'd be taken from, I think it's called our reserve, right? The eighty thousand dollars in reserve and we've had enough problems with not having enough money to cover things when we need to. So um also that money does come ultimately from residents um to the town. And so the residents have been carrying that belt for the last two years. And if you went with option three, it'd be saying, hmm, too bad, you're gonna carry it again, because that money came from the residents. And I really think we need to have that reserve, especially going into recession. Um and just in general, we're always looking for money somewhere. I think we should not give up so easily.
No more further public comment. Um any I guess we'll go for a motion and if there's anything.
So do I need to make an amendment or I can just amend it in the motion? Um I'd like to move to approve, we'll get the right spot here. Um ordinance number seventeen dash twenty twenty two dot one 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 one. And ordinance adopting twenty twenty three proposed water and wastewater usage rates to be effective January first twenty twenty three.
I second that.
Are there any further comments or discussion from the board? Uh may I get a roll call on the motion?
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
No.
Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Trustee Teeth?
Yes.
Trustee Vegan?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes. All right, the next item of is going to be resolution number thirty seven dash twenty twenty two, a resolution of town of Wellington, Colorado, adopting a new police schedule for twenty twenty three. Abby Garcia, our town administrator, will be presenting, Ms. Christine.
Thank you, Mayor Trustee. So this has been a work in progress. We've had several people working on it over the past year. Trustee Gator, I think it's asked me several times over, when are we gonna get to that? I'm like, I'm trying. So I appreciate everyone's patience on this. Um so what is in the packet is the fee schedule that we're requesting to be adopted. There are, once the adoption happens, we'll take out the highlights and the notes and things like that. And you will notice there are those fees that are highlighted in light peach. Those are all adopted by ordinance. We can't make and we can't make any changes to those right now. What what it is and what it is. We can't take them out, we can't remove them, we can't add to them. Um there are some or there are some keys in there that are highlighted in the light green. Um those are ones that can be adopted by resolution and there are a couple that we are looking at to either add or increase just a little bit, just based on um the cost of service for the town such as rental of the park. We it it costs a lot more to hire staff to put up the fencing than it did in two thousand eight. So trying to just recover those costs and and trying to be really smart about um not um increasing them so much that it puts it out of reach for our residents or our citizens to be able to do their part or utilize any of our services. Um you will find in there also some fees that we can't find where they were ever adopted. Um they've been on our they've been on like our local little fee schedule that we charged like cemetery fees and things like that. But I could not find anywhere where they were formally adopted. So this is why we wanted to go through this process because I have a hard time having charging our residents' fees that the board of trustees hasn't approved first. So the liquor license fees, those are those are fees that are set by state statute. We have a not to exceed amount. So you'll notice that even for a new license, people charge a thousand dollars for that, but we're recommending seven hundred and fifty dollars because you know, to start a new business, it's expensive. We do have to recover our cost and we do put a lot of staff time in those like the license applications. So I'm standing for any questions that you may have and I'll do my best.
Start with trustee Gator.
So just to clarify on the ones on here that they say to be set by resolution, would we be setting that today? Okay.
Yes.
Wanted to make sure that I understood that. Okay. Um and then all the mainly goes like the waters or that we literally just
Yeah, so we yeah, we were at those and it's updated, so.
All right, um. So the ones like, for example, like the contractor license doing renewal annually, the fifty dollars. Um current fee was twenty five and it says resident resolution number twelve twenty two. I think so we would basically be overriding that resolution.
Correct. And then I would put the new resolution number in there. So if anybody ever asks, we could go directly to this resolution and look it up and have this attachment.
Got it. Okay. Um and then I very much appreciate the adjustments variance. Um it was kind of shocking to see that go from a thousand dollars to we were charging two two fifty. Oh, okay. So what was put on the original sheet was an incorrect number. We haven't been charging people that's now.
What was put on the sheet in the prior packet were proposed changes?
Oh, got it.
And it's based on staff time according to uh to ensure those programs. Um but that was there was a discrepancy in how they were enough in the past. Those were not the ordinance.
Okay.
So that can be brought back for future.
Okay, got it. Okay, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yes, I went back and I checked out any because some recommended um fees, but those were the fee any fees that had to be adopted by ordinance, I returned, I put back to the original fee because this resolution could make those changes.
Those were the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Gator. Uh trustee D.
No questions. I mean, it's important that we get these uh in writing and that we recover our cost of service. So thank you, Ted.
And you said anything that was not highlighted is not ordinance bound, so we can change it anytime?
Correct. Anything that was adopted by a resolution prior to
Trustee Teeth?
I have a lot of questions. Okay. Um so as far as the contractor new and renewal annually, I understand that um I understand the current fee of twenty five dollars. Um I would like to request that that remain at twenty five dollars or thirty if you're looking at an hour's worth of work on staff time. Just because the fact that you have to add in contractor's license and contractor typically applies for a large amount of permits. So you also have permitting fees that are attached to that said contractor's license. Um in knowing how to look up contractor's license, it's easily entering a name into DORA to verify contractor's license. It takes me about three minutes. Um so I understand the charge. I would like to see it not be a fifty dollar charge for contractor's license, just because they do pay a large amount of fees elsewhere further on in the fee schedule. So that is something that I would like to see go back to either twenty five or thirty for an hour's worth of staff work and not fifty dollars. Um so that is one thing that I did know in this. The other thing is is the trash haulers um license that was adopted in nineteen ninety four is what it's saying here, Patty. Is there a way to bring that to request to change it if we choose to do so?
Sure. And I and I did note that in the memo that the trash haulers and business license fees need a full review. Um and we'll bring that back to the later date.
Got it.
That's since it was adopted by ordinance, I kept it as it was, but definitely it is on on the scheduled for review. Adding it to your full setting.
So and then looking at like the liquor licensing fees, when I'm going down the schedule, so it looks like everything that's assigned in the the fee schedule is based off of the state statute. Correct. Um but the only thing that we didn't base off the state statute was new liquor license application fees and the new mid liquor license concurrent review. Is there a specific reason why we only decreased those two and didn't decrease any of the other ones?
So this is what we historically charged. I didn't make any changes to what had been charged in the past. So it was just I kept the same fee schedule.
Got it. So should we keep the same fee schedule if we're looking at everything else turns off the state statute? Should we not single out two specific things?
It it really doesn't matter. Municipalities vary quite a bit. Um and this, when our responsibility is as far as liquor licensing, our fees is we need to we need to be able to show that we're what we're doing is just recovering our costs. Um I don't, I have a hard time thinking it's gonna cost us a thousand dollars in staff time to run a new liquor license or a transfer application. But I do think um it'll it it it'll take easily a hundred dollars to process a renewal based on staff time and and the amount of investigation we have to do for those renewals and things like that. So um I I stand by what this says. Most municipalities do charge the same amount and most do charge a thousand, but I just don't feel comfortable with that right now.
Got it. So are we charging too much then at seven fifty? Okay. That's smart, but I did. Um so the miscellaneous water fee uh account transfer fee of ten dollars, was that part of our resolution or is that getting set in this resolution?
That is something that has been charged in the in the past, but was never adopted.
Okay, so it's not abnormal to charge for a transfer.
No, no, it's no, it's not. It does take some staff time to go in and and make those transfers and look up the information, make sure the address is correct, things like that.
Got it. My last one, and then I'll be done, is on page seventy five, you have an application fee for a special event. For twenty five, you have an annual vendor fee for twenty five. And then we also have business licensing fees that we require all businesses to have for that additional twenty five dollars. So at the end of the day, we have a business that comes to town and then it has to fill out an application fee to be a vendor, like say a food truck. And then do they also have to do an annual vendor fee for another twenty five? So are we looking at seventy five dollars total for say a food truck to come down and park in Wellington?
I don't know that. And these were all adopted twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, it appears. Um it's something we can add. I can add that to the schedule of things to look at when we talk about the other fees, um like the business licensing and um there is um there was a legislation passed about business licensing last year um that we need to look at internally and talk to Mr. Tapien to see how that works because there are some some requirements um that have been set forth as far as what what we require for business licensing. And I see Ms. Hodling is coming up to help explain the vendor licensing thing.
Um but special event permit, that is the person that is pulling the special event permit. It's not in each individual food truck that's pulling the permit. Um so does that help answer the question? So it's not every food truck that's paying for the like if there's a food truck rally, it's just the person that pulls that permit for it, not every single individual vendor for it. You got it. But would they still pay the business license fee of twenty five and the vendor fee of twenty five?
You know, that's something that um could be uh looked at a little bit better. There we don't, we're not a home role municipality. We're not self-collecting sales tax. We do expect that each um any business that comes to town has a business license a annual permit.
Um I think the trouble that started to to run into is that um not
that if they weren't remitting the sales tax, I think there was kind of a back and forth in twenty twenty or when was that? It was in twenty nineteen, yes, before that. And so I think that 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 board at that time kind of struggled with that is um are you know, how are we ensuring that we're collecting sales tax? Um if they're not, then at least just pay that, you know, the um the permit for everyone. Vendor fee for it. So so they're not paying the special then fee there. So it is two times um um but you're not getting not every single vendor that's coming to town. It's it's really, really complicated. It's, we will bring it back. Yeah.
Every one is aggressive, right?
Yes, it it all is. And then resolution, one that adopted by resolution, I can tell you dear, on the norm by ordinance, but um I will I just add it back to the list of things to to talk to you guys about, we'll bring it back.
Do you feel it would be beneficial to postpone the consideration then until we get all of the information to vote on it?
Oh, these are all changeable once it's been.
And and they're already, they're most like the ones you're talking about have already been adopted. There's already a resolution that has that has adopted those. So those are fees that are already in place. So we could talk, what I'm recommending is we would come back and talk to you guys about the holler, the holler licenses. Um come back about the vendor fees and the business licenses and things like that. Those are people that are already established. This resolution, so the fee schedule will not change that. Got it. They will already be charged.
That.
Uh I'm sorry. I don't have anything. Um thank you for putting together. I just appreciate that. A lot of things we can discuss in the future. Um so now we'll bring to a public comment.
I'm Nicole Hicks with them survivors and I was just coming because of the waste dollars like them. I am licensed in several other towns around. Um the most I pay is a hundred dollars per vehicle. Uh most of them are about fifty to seventy five dollars per vehicle. So that is um just something that I wanted to bring to your eyes, the tension of what I'm seeing out there.
Um when, if you don't mind, what municipalities are you paying those in?
Um Loveland, Fort Collins, Windsor, Greeley, Pembroke. Name a few, so basically the northern Colorado area.
Okay.
Um I only do residential here in Wellington, but I do do the Rollos in the other areas.
Does there any questions on the board?
Uh we definitely need to have a a larger conversation about the holler licensing for many other reasons, but and then also a consideration of visit by vehicle or is it a general license for the holler? So those are, that's really good input for us to consider and we need to talk about it. So I appreciate that.
Well, one more thing for you too. I mean, is that including your junk haulers, your scrappers, you know, or is it just, you know, your residential haulers or is it your Rollos? I mean, there's a lot of different, you know, things there that you know, can be considered. And if you guys want, and what are the questions for me, please feel free to chat. I'd love to offer any info that I can.
All right. Thank you very much. May I get a motion and a second on the event?
I'd like to move to approve resolution number thirty seven dash twenty two, a resolution in town of Long Island, Colorado, adopting a fee schedule.
A second. Are there any final comments from the board? We'll start with trustee.
Very glad to see this finally here. Um and I'm glad we've got a list of things to bring back and I think we definitely should as people have concerns with any fees on here, please bring them to our attention so that we can bring them back up. But part of the problem we've had for the last two years, we've been waiting on this, is there was no clear fees are the fees that we're charging and why. So at least now we have, you know, even today is the day that fee was set and now we know this is what the fee is, this is what it's set at. And that way people have an issue with the fee, they can come to us and then we can always reconsider it and again, whether it's a resolution or an ordinance, they can both be redone. It's just there's a different process. So I think it's good. You get done.
I uh I do want to acknowledge the integrity of our staff. There's a lot of the the ones regarding liquor licensing and the we could be charging up to a thousand dollars, but based on your feedback and what you think is fair and actually what was involved in it, you're recommending a lower fee. And I think I think that just is a testament to the people that we have working for us and 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 their integrity. So I really appreciate that. That's wonderful that that came through. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Mason?
Okay.
Looks like you got a real good roadmap here and uh and I agree completely with uh trustee Bailey. Looks like you got a real good roadmap here. And uh, and I agree completely with uh trustee David with their two. The integrity that you guys showed in this together. So, thank you.
Thank you, President.
On the dedication of time, because I do spend some time on the unicorn. And it is really hard to find these ordinances. So I'm in, I'm impressed that you found as many as you did dating back to the nineties. So I am grateful, I understand from trying to dig through them, that it's extremely difficult. So I'm thankful that we actually have something to go off, but I'm looking forward to getting. Trustee and community feedback on anything that we might possibly need to change in the future.
Absolutely, absolutely. It was a game effort.
Yeah, very appreciated. Thank you for that. Um here no. Heard comments negative, we'll call on the motion.
Trusty Gator?
Yes.
Trusty Daly?
Yes.
Trusty Mason?
Yes.
Trusty Keats?
Yeah.
Trusty Beahan?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll be moving on to budget ordinance in the first one of the ordinance. Number eighteen dash twenty twenty-two, which will be to adopt the twenty twenty-three budget that was presented in the packet. Presentation in the legislature. Um director of friends.
Um in your packet, I provide the one of the fund. I hope that addresses any final questions. Um most notably, I want you to look at the decreases that we had in our general fund expenditures. Um we were able to reduce that by forty-three percent, along with a part fund saying another forty-three percent decrease. Um our straight fund, we have a significant increase in expected expenditures. We do have enough in all of our fund balances to cover our reserve policy. Um, we do have some negative balances at the end of the day, but because of our. Fund balances, we are inclined with our revenue standards. Um we do have an increase in our drainage fund, but that is because of our BDM project. Which is the biggest increase there. Um same with water and sewer and that's because of. So you guys have any further questions on the question?
Thank you.
Our president Reagan. No questions.
I'm still gonna be a stickler on the police officer thing. Um if we could, as a board, I know we had discussed it this last time. About agreeing to address it at the end of the year and see where we were sitting. But it's something I know that can take up to six months to get someone in and get someone trained. Is it possible for our board to come to an agreement that we say? We will accept by July, that we are okay to bring on. As an extra LCFO officer into town. Is that something that we can say we will commit to? Just to give us the deadline, give the LCFO a deadline if they need to get someone trained? We do have um a lot of things to look at and consider when we look at the increase in some of the crime. We look at, we're getting ready to open our first dispensary. And that's, these things concern me. I know it's a responsibility of us constitutionally as the responsibility. Is there something we can do where we say we will agree by July, you're going to bring on? An additional LCFO officer?
I mean, I'll head this one off. Um, I would like to trust Sergeant Cherry, the information that I've received from him. And how the department itself is moving forward with doing their due diligence before I set anything in stone. Because I wanna see what his scheduling turns out to be, and if that additional coverage will actually be needed. Based off those scheduled scheduling adjustments that they're planning on maybe to have twenty-four hour coverage. So I would really like to allow them to do their professional um outlook. For what they see as the needs and necessities before we address that or make it something set in stone. That's me personally. Um trusty Gator, would you want to say something? Yeah, a- and I agree with your assessment that there's a need for additional law enforcement. I know I initially started the conversations with Lieutenant Badger. About the community service deputy and trying to do that. But when we got to the point of really looking through the budget. I have a really hard time looking at, yes, we have a healthy fund balance in the general fund right now, but we're already going into that fund balance by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And when we talk about adding another position on top of that, that we're guaranteeing a hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus new equipment, everything like that. Especially with uncertainty as to what's gonna happen with the economy over the next year. I don't wanna be putting us in a position where we're contracting and bringing people in, because if we run into a situation six months from now where we have to start saying. We've gotta cut things back. It gets a lot uglier when we've added things to that. So my preference would be, I I would love to revisit it, but I don't wanna say, yes, we will absolutely bring someone on. In July, but what I would be happy, I would be happy to say, let's come back and we will have a discussion in. You know, May or June next year and say, okay, let's look at, how's our budget for this year to turn down? Could we get our audit? Is our, is our property tax coming back in now? Because we also have that to contend with, is that we won't be getting property taxes until our audit from twenty twenty-one is in. So it's like, we have all these variables that I don't wanna be committing to us taking more money out of our reserves from a financial standpoint. As much as I agree, I would love to have additional law enforcement up here, I would not feel comfortable. Saying we need to take more out of the budget where we're already going to have a balance.
Uh in my mind too, we can't make a commitment without the money commitment associated with it. So if you're not in the budget, I don't want, I don't feel comfortable saying, but we will do it, even if not in the budget. But what I would love to do is say at this meeting in June, we will discuss it. And you got the right way to do it. Put a date on, if you wanna put a date on it, we'll, we'll know tax, sales tax. We'll know the state of from Cherry, his most previous presentation, and maybe we can prepare something for that discussion. But we can put a date on the discussion, and I think that'd be great, but I can't say at that discussion, I will say yes. Uh cause a lot of things are involved. So I think we should put a date on it though.
Charity, if we looked at our first meeting in May, which is the ninth, that could give you adequate time to get the first quarter numbers together, like January through March. So I would be happy to say, May ninth, that's our first meeting in May, that we come back and revisit that, because we'll have first quarter numbers. Sergeant Cherry will have roughly six months to have worked under the new schedule, so he'll be able to tell us how things are going in that. We hopefully will be making good progress on our um audit if we're not finished with it at that point. So financially, we should be in a much better place. And then at that point, if things are looking much better, I would, my conservative financial aspect would probably be a lot less, and I'd be a lot more willing. So I'm happy to to say, let's set a date to come back on the first meeting in May, on the ninth. That's a, that's an agenda item that we will be discussing. As to whether or not to add in additional permission for LCFO. That would.
Yes, yes, having a date makes me feel more confident, comfortable about it.
Okay, yeah. Trusty Gator. Um, did you have any final things, trusty Keith? I wanna give you some of your time, my time, so some of yours.
No, you're fine. No, I'm grateful. I know that you are an amazing asset. For us here in Wellington to have, and I am grateful that you still choose to stay on with this common Wellington. I know that you weren't handed the best uh situations, but you have been doing an amazing job. I'm grateful that you also have the finance committee to kind of bounce ideas off of, help residents understand spending. I think that honestly, this is the best that our finance department has probably looked and and extended to period of time. So I'm very grateful for what you are doing through Wellington.
Um so I just wanted to get a clarification on the budget for twenty twenty-two. I believe we had clearly significant cans spent in terms of the. From brands or the overhead or just trying to understand the forty-three percent decrease. Or was that just the shift of the indirects cost to the fund? Okay. Sounds like, like wait a second, and I was looking at the indirect, it's like three million dollars, got it. Okay, so shifting those to be just directly in the funds versus doing the transfers, crazy, okay, got it. Perfect. No, that looks good. And again, I wanna say again, I appreciate the work you've done, really working with departments to bring us a clean budget to start with. Um I, as I said multiple times, the cleanest budget I've seen in three years now. Um and again, I know we can do the process better every year and let's see if it's got towards balance, but this has been that budget I've seen yet, so I appreciate all the work that's done into it.
I appreciate having the opportunity to patent, to ask questions and review items, so thank you for that. I know that it's not easy to do well. Um and I don't have any questions on the budget, but what I do have is again, another plea for. Those watching or anybody who knows, spread the word. Um the more sales tax that Wellington receives. Uh that goes toward streets, arcs and law enforcement. So um. Among other things, but that, if if those are things that maybe in Wellington you have concerns or questions about. Um ask yourself that question before you shop in Fort Collins. Um and then remember that your money that you spend in Wellington goes back to Wellington. So when we're worried about a balanced budget or having enough money for additional corporal or or law enforcement here. Um that's where people are spending their money. And that's why we can or cannot make some of these choices. So just a plea for everyone to make sure you support local. And if not, find online.
Trusty Mason, no comment. Yeah, you have a lot of patience and a lot of grit to get through all that and do what you've done. Uh most repeat, but I'm sorry, if you're saying killer job, and really appreciate that. So thank you for taking time going through it and did things cleaned up. It's been a, been a long haul, so really appreciate that. Uh are there any comments from the public on this agenda item? Okay, may I get a motion and a second on this agenda item?
Do we need to make the amendment for the.
Yeah, that would be made in the moment, well.
I can reflect it in the minutes.
That'll be perfect. Interflex it in the minutes and then just add it on to our season meeting's calendar.
I've already added it.
I make a motion to approve ordinance number eighteen dash zero two zero two two as proposed.
Second.
May I get a roll call? Or any final comments from board?
Trusty Gator?
Yes.
Trusty Daly?
Yeah.
Trusty Mason?
Yes.
Trusty Keats?
Yes.
Trusty Beahan?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes. Uh now I'm gonna take a six-minute recess.
And I saw. Does the email. Oh, I was for November four.
Oh, I was for November four. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
I make a motion to approve ordinance number eighteen dash zero two zero two two as proposed.
Second. May I get a roll call? Or any final comments from board? Hold on.
Trusty Gator?
Yes.
Trusty Daly?
Yeah.
Trusty Mason?
Yes.
Trusty Teets?
Yes.
Trusty Wegan?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes. Uh, now I want to take a six minute recess. Six minutes. Time being. Why six? So that puts it to eight about seven.
Congratulations.
A little weird. There.
Um, but I mean, that much. So when I. One, it loaded up. Oh, so, um. And I saw. Yeah. Yeah. Because the email. Yeah. I was for November four. Obviously. Oh. Okay. Oh. Okay. 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 Okay.
Oh, I bet that's what happened.
All right, someone to be.
Okay.
Call the November eighth, one twenty-two meeting back in the second time being PM. Uh, next item, we have ordinance number nineteen dash twenty-two in ordinance appropriating sums of money to pray expensive that they might abilities to the town of Wellington, Colorado for the fiscal year beginning January first, twenty-three and ending in December twenty-third? Of twenty twenty-two.
Not now.
Oh.
I I'm.
Thirty-first.
I may have typed that.
Twenty twenty-three.
It's probably it's it's.
I may I may have scripted you incorrectly.
It's okay. You're talking. Yeah.
We try so hard.
Okay, well, this is the second ordinance to pass in your budget is setting with that amount. Does anyone have any questions?
We will start with trustee Denny.
And agenda question.
As you get. Nope, this just lined up with the budgets, all capital projects, sets, plans, everything budget. No, no, no other questions. First, thank you. As you teach.
On the mill levy for section two, I noticed that was lower this year than it was last year. Is that correct?
No, the they're the same, but no, I mean, amount to the same, you're, um. And that's the next.
That's the next.
Ordinance?
Yeah. Or the one before that.
Apologies. So no, no questions.
Trust you, we can no question. Trust you, Mason. No questions. I also have no questions. Um, any comments from the public on this agenda item? No. May I get a motion and a second on this agenda item, please?
I make a motion to approve ordinance number nineteen dash two zero two two as proposed.
Second. May I get a or any further comments? No.
They did that correctly.
Oh, yes, the correction in the ordinance would be great.
No, they are.
Yeah. Right now, they just have great, perfect. Um, Harry, no further comments, may I get a roll call on the motion, please?
Trusty Gator?
Yes.
Trusty Daly?
Yeah.
Trusty Mason?
Yes.
Trusty Teets?
Yes.
Trusty Wegan?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes. All right, next item, um. This is the final ordinance related to the budget for this number twenty-two and ordinance letting general property taxes for the taxable year twenty-two to pray costs of the government for the town of Wellington, Colorado for the calendar year beginning January first, twenty-three and ending December thirty-third, twenty-three in December.
So this is the third final ordinance needed to pass your budget. This is levering for property taxes. This is the information that we're providing in the county on our property tax relation. Um, the mill levy amounts are the same as last year because we did not have a property tax increase.
Got it.
All right, we will move on to questions, comments from the board. Trust you, me. So come. Here.
None.
I also have none.
One, oh, for clarification, no, no, I just, I believe I know the answer. The mill is a set amount, so that does not change year over year unless we actually go to the voters. What's?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That was it.
Uh, any comments from the public? May I get a motion and second?
Move to approve ordinance number twenty dash twenty-two and ordinance letting general property taxes with taxable year twenty-two to the great cost of government for the town of Wellington, Colorado, for the calendar year beginning January first, twenty-three and ending December thirty-first, twenty-three.
A second? Any final comments? No. Very no further comments, may I get a roll call?
Trusty Gator?
Yes.
Trusty Daly?
Yeah.
Trusty Mason?
Yes.
Trusty Teets?
Yes.
Trusty Wegan?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes. All right, next we have ordinance number twenty-one dash twenty-two and ordinance regarding school zones within the town of Wellington. Uh, Bob Young, Director of Public Works will be presenting once again.
Evening. Bobby, I'm like, what's your director? Um, this ordinance that we're bringing to you tonight is, um, specifically to allow us to add some new school zones, to all the schools, so that is that is school and change some of the timing of existing schools. In a little bit more flexible manner, the existing ordinance has for nineteen ninety-nine. And it has, um, prescribed areas for the school zones and prescribed times for the schools. And what we've learned in working with PSC or last really from the beginning of COVID on is they had to be pretty flexible about their start and end dates. It's important that the school zone, school zones match closely, um, the actual times when they're needed, right? You really don't want them running unless they're needed and, you know, vice versa also. So, um, this ordinance would allow us to sign the school zone appropriately in accordance with MTCB standards and other engineering standards, and that would basically create this school zone. The ordinance that Dan's put together, um, further allows additional penalties to apply for violations of the school zones, which is something that we have in our existing schools now, but not at on September ninth, because it's not a school zone yet, even though we did go change the speed limit to to twelve miles an hour. Um, which the town engineer also has the authority to. So, um, that's it in a nutshell, and we've gone pretty fast, so I could have probably made this longer, but, uh, we'll put pretty questions.
Thank you. Uh, trustee G. Okay, great. So this is gonna go, I just look like woo, sorry, clarify because they they didn't see any ordinance where it spelled out adding school zones. So is that just something that we are saying that you as the town engineer would put those together? We're not, we're not as a board saying this is where the school zones will be.
Correct. Um, okay, this this proposal allows the town to define the school zones through the act of signing them as school zones.
Okay. Is that pretty fairly standard across how it's done?
It is.
Okay.
MTCB is a great type of documents, it's an engineering document. Um, factors, you know, such that it's less difficult. The engineer, the jurisdictions, that's that.
Perfect. And then the other question I had is with that stretch of category of nine ones, where are we looking at that sign as a school zone? Will we be raising the regular speed limit backup? That's a question I've gotten from many people both in the town and in the county about the speed limit being twenty miles an hour? Period, whether there's children, no children, everything.
I'm curious with that feedback. Well, that's good. It was negative. Our our intention is to raise that to thirty miles an hour.
Okay.
So we'll be replacing those standards. Those schools obviously have their own systems.
And then do you have an idea as to what the times you're gonna be looking at, same as your looking change?
Yes, I've gotten the times from, um, Nancy Remington, I've forgotten her rank, so I can't. But, um, I still don't know, start from seven twenty-five, fourteen twenty-three, uh, rice, eight twenty-five, fifteen and three. The new school, nine o'clock. So that's the sort of end dates we've got to. And this is really where kind of the engineering judgment comes in, how far ahead of that does it need to start? How far after that? You know, one thing that you don't have yet is, um, in my understanding is that the new schools can be an open campus, so we'll probably want to, uh, turn that schools on, schools on, uh, to launch as well. For the times when it's sort of heading out, especially high school.
Okay, so they'll just basically be running continuous from that start time until roughly around, whatever we pick.
So you can tell you be twenty, thirty minutes before the start time and what are you guys active, so.
Now, with the school zones, and I only know the one that's on Main Street, the school zone there, and I know it's like on in the morning, then it's off and it's back on later. Um, so are we changing all the school zones? So now they'll operate basically the entirety of the day from that morning time.
No, or those all of them will operate, basically you can think of see the two or three windows. One that surrounds the start time, one that surrounds the end time, and one that surrounds perhaps the the lunchtime, if there's, if it's open campus.
Got it.
Kids to be outrunning.
God, so it's not just going from the beginning until now. It is, okay, that that's the part I was missing. Okay, thank you.
Uh, president.
That's amazing. I only have one, one question, uh, just under the, uh, any person that commits a speeding violation in a school zone, it's subject to the increased penalties. Certainly, I have no problem with increased penalties. I'm just curious, those don't seem to be defined here, so I was just curious, are they defined somewhere else?
This ordinance references the model traffic code, which has been adopted by the town of Wellington. It also references state statute, so there are other places that define what what the increased penalties are. They will apply in certain situations, but there are other documents that do that. We want to be clear on here was these are school zones defined by the town of Wellington and in those schools, so there are higher passes to, higher penalties to apply. Right now, that's in an ordinance that's not incorporated in our town code, but it is a town ordinance back from late nineties, so this just makes it all much clearer and much clearer. Okay, it's defined also.
Yes. We had, do we have an idea how much this from the justice? Not that that's really a factor, and does Booter school district put anything towards this by chance?
Um, they are installing most of these signs, um, really as part of their development project.
Okay, right, yes.
Even some cleanup there, they built the road out there, they built the roads, the other streets, and the private streets inside the campus. Uh, that's all kind of standard for the for the development project, right? So as part of that signing was also a requirement and, um, that turned out to be a bit of an afterthought, but they did, um, hire a traffic engineer to study for that and see that we made some comments on it. Um, they've addressed those comments and we have a final plan, which basically looks like uh, really the school zone of just north of sixty-two, just south of Washington. Because there's two crossings in there, two crossings that, you know, roughy as well, so although we're trying to discourage that one, so there won't be a crossing. Because there's really no receiving sidewalk on the other side. That's not the best spot for for crossing. So the short answer to your question is that they're paying for most of it. Well, we've already done some signing and some, especially some street striding. We have strippers, so it's gonna be the worst. But you're talking about.
I do have a few questions. So in looking at the setting the mile per hour speed limits, you said that you're going to move it from twenty to thirty miles per hour? And is that during school times?
That would be all the time, except when the schools are concerned. Active.
And when the school zones are active, they would go down to the twenty?
Twenty, correct.
Okay, perfect. I was concerned when you said that you're gonna leave them all the time at thirty. I'm like, mm-hmm. Um, my other thing is, is have you consulted with LCSO and state routes to school as far as?
We have in the sense that they're aware of this and we've got some feedback from from them. I think LCSO, we we had a lot of discussions with them, we lowered the speed to twenty. And that's kind of, as you call it, a kind of emergency matter to coincide in the school opening. Um, uh, but yeah, we've talked to Nancy and we've talked to, I'll say, for us to school. Um, this is really an engineering exercise, though, so engineers on the English groups that I'm aware of, so I don't want to sound, this sounds like old engineers. But it really does have to be done according to established rules and regulations. And so there's kind of stuff, a lot of flexibility.
Do you plan on changing the other school zones to thirty like the?
The the normal speed limit, we'll call it, is more a function of the street classification and the expected traffic volumes, traffic counts. So a local street like Grant, uh, is gonna have a local street speed limit. Now, but generally speaking, all the schools are almost for twelve miles. And that's fairly standard.
No, I'm talking more about when they're not in school.
Right.
So because I know they're twenty-five on Sixth Street, correct? When they're out of school?
Um, there's some twenty-fives and some thirty on Arizona, about Sixth Street.
Got it. I just don't want people to get confused where they see one school zone is a thirty, the other school zone is a twenty-five, and another school zone might be a different speed limit?
All the school zones are twenty and the all the other times, the speed limits again are based more on the particular street, not so much the fact that it can become a school zone. Right, the school zone kind of lays over the top of the standard, um, speed limit for that street. Again, those are set based on other considerations besides schools. Mainly being traffic volumes, street classifications.
Got it. Um, so my last question is, I know Cooter High School there in Paula Drive is set at fifteen miles per hour at all times because the the campus is open the whole time the school is in, since we are having an open campus and we are gonna have high schoolers that have on and off periods where they can leave the school during the day, um, that thirty miles per hour, is that going to remain in effect the entire day other than those twenty mile per hour zones?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a thanks for listening. Uh, any comments from the public on this agenda item?
Wait.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I'm trying to take them, so I'm uh, Karen, I think I was in the know, um. So I'm not familiar with the new, uh, middle high school, but, um, my son has attended other schools in Cooter School District and, um, I don't know if this is like a speed limit change or an area to bring up a change, but, um, where, uh, trustee teachers are just talking about the fifteen miles an hour on. So that's where they would have to pick up all of our special needs children so that they don't dart out into traffic and don't have those types of issues. And so I guess I would just like to say, I'd like for y'all to consider that as well as to have an area where that speed limit is lowered so that the transportation, the children getting to and on onto and off of the buses and the parents who are picking up and dropping off for there to be a lower speed limit because like when the children get off the bus and there's twenty to thirty children getting off at high school, there's usually one teacher and one to two care professionals. So if you have twenty to thirty students, good luck getting them ready with them. Um, usually if they're verbal, you can have, and their cognizance is a verbal and they understand what that verbal, um, instruction is to them, and they'll pay closer every group. But if they have more than like three of them that don't understand or have, like my son has no idea what the danger is, he'll walk right out in front of the park and go, gee, I wonder why it hit me. He doesn't have that recognition. So I would just like to ask that yes, you, Bob, I'd like you to consider, um, something like that for our new middle school, high school. My son is in school right now and this is his new year. Um, but there are so many special needs students that will be coming from not only Wellington but other um, areas as well, towns, most, other, other towns and things that are nearby. And just to have something planned out for that area to make sure that those special needs students are safe and the staff are safe. Because I always want to point this out, they say, well, your child's a one-to-one, that means that my child has to have one staff member and nobody else. Um, they can't be in charge of any other kids. Um, he's a flight risk. So if that child did not have that one person, one-on-one, what would that look like because we have the children? So my son might take off and then I have five other students. And my son is in more more danger than those five other students at that moment. So that's definitely going to go after my son. And then there's these five students who are unsupervised. And that is a really big issue for the health and safety of the teacher, the care professional, the students, and the students who do not qualify for that one-on-one. So I would just really like to point out that something needs to be done in that area for special needs students as well. Please consider that.
May I get a motion and a second on this agenda item?
I'd like to move to approve ordinance number twenty-one dash twenty-two, it's regarding school zones in that well.
Second. Any final comments from board? There are no further comments. May I get a roll call on the motion?
Trusty Gator?
Yes.
Trusty Daly?
Yes.
Trusty Mason?
Yes.
Trusty Teets?
Yes.
Trusty Wegan?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes. Now we will address the crack seal contract that was pulled from consent. Bring it up here. Okay, uh, so, uh, this would be uh, contract provider, practice, improvement services. When you're about down. Present these, I guess, maybe you want some direction from?
That would be helpful.
Perfect. Trusty Teets? Trusty Teets?
So this is one of two things. You answered a lot of my questions. Thank you for making sure that that correction was handled in the contract. Um, I just wanted to verify what the warranty was and you informed me that there is no warranty on this kind of work. I had never read about crack sealing until I received a call from a resident asking all kinds of questions about it. And now I think I know way too much about this, but it's now, it's now up the door. Um, I like the fact that we're not filling, that we're actually doing the clean and seal. Um, I read a lot that filling causes more issues than the clean and seal does. Um, but a lot of this comes as a resident request to have some public comment on this, so I wanted to bring it back so they could have that time to comment on it.
Trusty Gator? I just have one question. I know um, in there you have the not to exceed of ninety eight thousand, uh, the contract price for seventy five thousand. So was just asking if you could speak to the difference between the two.
Um. In general, that seventy five thousand is their price based on their assumed number of pallets. Right? So this really is priced out by the pallet, complete in their place. And so they made an assumption because you just don't know how much crack seal material you really need until you start building, right? The crack is different. It's a different list. And we know how much we want to get done in terms of aerial extent of cracking. So basically, both of our bids are really per pallet, bids complete in place. So that seventy five was their assumed number based on their, uh, I think it's seventy pallets. Our hope would be to um, kind of maximize this contract instead of seventeen, like what you're doing two. Enough to get us into the the nineties because we have quite a few needs in this period. And we don't want to kind of shortchange ourselves since we're gonna have the contractor there. And that's by far the cheapest time to do it, that's what they've already finalized. So, so the, you know, the bids that we got, um, this is just not a area of endeavor that needs to be real clear bids, but we have a clear understanding in the contract of how we're paying for this. And this is something that frustrates me in general and taking a few conditions.
Yeah, and then I'm all about less expensive, but there was a really significant decrease, like getting half the price of the other bid. Do we have any understanding of why there is a big difference?
Uh, probably the same reason we could not get two bids, because um, they're busy and some of them are more interested in this work than others. We've worked with affordable many years and they want to come back and work for us again. And that's pretty typical and getting a good relationship going with the contractor, they can count on that as long as they're competitive. Um, a good base revenue form, so I suspect it's nothing more than that. Thank you.
Any further comments, questions from the board or before we move on?
Okay, that quickly, how do we determine uh, where we're gonna be doing this at?
I mean, geographically? Geographically, right. Um, there's some judgment involved with that. We want to keep the skill, we want to keep them in certain areas, just to know and run all over town. That's right. Um, so we've, in the past years, we've focused on some of the older areas in town. Um, this particular year, we have a number of streets that were built in only where for about six, seven years ago till now that now need be, have a certain kind of ceiling, especially the cracks at the form, separation from a, with the curb and the paving. Uh, it's important that we get out there and kind of treat all of those, we're trying to get all, all of those newer streets treated. Um, so it's a different kind of crack too, so that's gonna take the values about how you treat it. So that is basically, there is quite a bit of judgment involved and just kind of continually assessing the condition of the paving, which changes every year, every month sometimes.
Right, so we don't have one particular subdivision picked out. It's gonna be where we need it.
In this case, we need the newer subdivision, say, Meadows, possibly like Commons. Some of the Old Town Streets that we've done recently, we want to make sure and get those sealed up because af- after you build a street, it just tends to kind of settle in a little bit, the asphalt mat settles in. And typically we'll pull away from from the curb a bit or a little bit. So it's important to get in there and just addressing cracks at the form since they were built. That way we won't have to come back for many years, so it's just kind of the right time to do those newer streets. Thank you.
I'm thankful for the second bid getting sent over. So it gave me a chance to kind of see what their breakdown was and what the breakdown was of um, the affordable one and I didn't really see much of a difference between the two, so I agree that you're getting the same kind of service. I liked the the secondary one, S and S listed the linear feet that they plan on covering. That was, I think, the only difference in the two. So thank you for sending that second bid over so we could see.
Uh, public comments on the item?
Karen, I've been here all night, right? I feel like I'm the only presenter from the conference. Um, so I would like to have public comment on this because I asked um, trustee to um, hold it from the agenda because I live in the North. They've lived for thirteen years. And they have never seen any of the better work being done in the North. Um, I had contact before about specific crap that started at a manhole cover out in front of our home and now goes from sidewalk to sidewalk across our entire street. Which implies my child from writing has special needs stripe on the street and there's several of them throughout the entire street, not just in front of our home. Um, but I haven't seen this happen in thirteen years. And I was pretty upset when I was like, okay, so they're gonna go patient into the newer things being built. And then the older neighborhoods that have been here for a while still have not seen anything done. And I don't think that's right. Um, there's also other areas of town that are really poor too, but the North's pretty messed up. Um, and I know that there's other areas on the east side of the town that is pretty messed up as well, but I really want to maybe not just pick three places to do this. And I get that you don't want to moving all over town, but I think that there could be something like in these months, we're gonna work in this section of town, in these months, we're gonna work on this section of town. Because literally as soon as that area gets the, this work done, then it starts to grading. It's not like it's gonna hold up for ten years. It'll probably hold up for three to four years. And then that area is messed up again. And the next area doesn't get that done because this area was gonna say, well, we need to, we need this help again. So I'm really concerned that this type of work is not being performed through all of the neighborhoods in Wellington. And I'm really concerned that it's happening in Old Town again when they just had work done. And Wellington consists more just, you know, downtown, there's other neighborhoods too. And there's other neighborhoods besides the new neighborhoods. And I would like part of the town to take a step forward and start taking care of the old parts as well. All parts of Wellington are important because all parts of Wellington have our residents in it and that's who supports all of you to be our full trustees. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we get a comment from the board?
If he wants to put a comment.
Sure, I I think that uh, that you guys up for that next year's budget. That's been some practicing laws. There's, there's several subdivisions going to point the North and some others that are just an absolute wreck. And the reason for that is because they won't build correctly, they were built before current street standards. Uh, a lot of the utility trenches weren't properly impacted, they weren't washed. And if you drive through those two subdivisions in particular, you will see massive problems everywhere. And it's almost always attached to, and you're driving and you see it kind of dip in the road. That's where there's a water sewer surface heading off to a house. A lot of times you see the curves on this, this collapsed in the trench. It wasn't properly compacted, so that's very expensive project compared to crack seal. And uh, we do want to start talking about those kind of projects, the modern reconstruction projects. Closer in nature to what we've done in Old Town, not simply, right? Those uh, subdivisions in particular and a couple others need um, much larger project to fix the streets. So suspected you'll see the enhanced budget for that kind of thing that we would ask everyone to do in the next year's budget. Uh, when we finish up with Old Town Streets, which will be next year. We want to move right into some of the subdivisions for a similar type of reconstruction type program. It's almost certainly gonna be um, a little bit higher following you brought that.
Thank you. Uh, may I get a motion and a second on your agenda item?
Like to move to approve the contracts provided crack seals, tree maintenance services with a not to exceed for ninety eight thousand dollars. For the portable ceilings, right?
Thank you.
Any further comments on the board? May I get a roll call on that, please?
Trusty Gator?
Yes.
Trusty Daly?
Yes.
Trusty Mason?
Yes.
Trusty Teets?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Trusty Wiegand?
Yes. There are no other boards presented meeting, nine uh, reports, it's unturned.
At the last board meeting and also prior to that meeting, um, the board received some information from some businesses that might move into town regarding a potential modification to the marijuana, the marijuana ordinance was passed by the voters. That was presented in public comment at last meeting and I I I wondered a little bit whether the board wanted staff to put together a, a, a research on that issue and potentially propose a modified order of that ordinance. Um, while we're at it, um, on the December thirteenth board meeting, one of the items that's on that agenda, um, President Burke will be presenting a a presentation about the land use code, or the new land use map, the zoning map. I, I think just that the status updated where that is and what I have that's been discovered in reviewing the land use code and the marijuana ordinance, identified one change that staff would highly recommend um, to the marijuana ordinance going into twenty twenty three, when the board can make changes. It's an item that uh, is not significant, but certainly keep with the intent of once they're essentially residential, making sure that the setbacks are uniform to residential areas, city one residential zone that wasn't mentioned in that ordinance. So with that, what we would consider a necessary change, uh, that I want to bring in just in December prior to January first. Um, I want to know if the board had any interest in that, other ordinance or even other ideas that they'd like to be seen brought forward. Uh, they'll give that the discussion that's simple, but completing those in and or that you adopted it during the fact after the beginning of the year, which is when the board can make changes. So I I guess I'll look for feedback on whether the board would like to move forward with that ordinance that was presented last time or or somewhere.
Yeah, uh, I mean, I'll, I'll speak for myself, but I I may be speaking for the board on this. Um, I would like to have Mr. Bird present to us the options there. Um, listen to what you guys had in mind. I mean, the voters voted in um, that ordinance. And I don't, I don't personally see, I mean, in the exact moment to pursue something that was presented to us when we may get more facts down the road. Um, this board as a whole agrees with that?
I would be in agreement. The voters approved what they approved. Um, and obviously we have zoning coming back, so that will be some adjustments with being being re-zoned, so I don't know what that will change or not. Um, and I know the big thing the voters wanted to have marijuana shop in town and there's one in process right now, so um, I I don't see, I don't have desire to go back and redo what residents already approved through voting, so.
I have no desire to change what the residents did through their vote.
I would just assume keep it as it is right now. It just barely passed. We sure don't want to make it easier for more to come in. And just like what I heard, I think at the board adjustments, we shouldn't be picking winners and losers, making it easier for somebody to come in after this other gentleman pays attention to get his property. So I think we gotta be careful on that.
I, I would tend to agree with this. I mean, the fact that the ordinance only passed by one vote, the setbacks are what they are. And if we were to say that there was not at least one resident that made their decision based off uh, what those setbacks were, I think I, I think we might be missing a point on that, so uh, I, again, it, yeah, basically it's just that, you know, if, if a resident have seen those setbacks be at you know, fifteen hundred feet, it's entirely possible somebody would not have voted for the ordinance and then we wouldn't have it at all, so um, I am not inclined to uh, change some of that.
You have a question about with understanding the definition of preschools, was it not? Not just that have to do with that in addition to the.
I, I believe the proposal, I don't have it in front of me, but I believe that removed preschools and daycares from the definition of school and then left the setback from schools at two thousand feet that had changed the setbacks for preschools and daycares to fifteen hundred or a thousand. So it, it really was just about changing the setbacks only for preschools and daycares. I, I, with my, with what I remember, I think was, I think there might have been a couple.
Um, yeah, I'm not really interested in that, but if you guys ever have a recommendation.
I would like to hear from her, bro, Ken. And all issues.
Is she there?
She is.
Hi.
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, I have a lot of questions for the town attorney. So I think that at my next meeting with Patty and with Dan, um, I want to get some clarification on a few items from them before I make a statement on a position that I want to take.
Perfect. Do you have any direction?
I'll make sure I am available near project. I, I think that sounds, but that's a very clear direction. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm sure.
You guys have been busy. The trustees have been busy, so um, and I just want to do a shout out because um, Kelly and I were talking been talking in the last couple of weeks about um, the having gratitude for the things that are happening in our town. It seems a lot of times we get bogged down with what's wrong with water rates, things like that. And wanting to express gratitude for what is happening in Wellington. And one of the things is that pilot transportation program, um, North Front Range MPO put it out, the Colorado one did an article and trustee Gator really worked on that himself. I mean, I, I helped a little bit, but it was a little, little bit compared to the amount of time he's put into it. Um, the Veterans Day event, um, trustee Teet sent out some pictures and things and I was showing it to my husband and it just looked so cool and just really proud to be part of a, a community that, that does things like that and trustee Mason and Mayor Pro Tem McDonald being at that event and speaking and, and trustee Wiegand and doing his part with the Main Street MOU and trustee Daly as well. Um, and seeing that come to fruition tonight was very cool. Um, from a staff standpoint, tonight we saw water rates adopted, we saw the budget adopted, we saw the fee schedule adopted, we saw the MOU adopted. And this team works tirelessly on behalf of the town. And trying so hard to provide you the information that you need and trustee Teet, you laugh about all your questions and we don't mind that whatsoever. Bring on the questions and we do our very best to answer them. There may be a time that we're like, oh my God, we don't have time to answer all the questions, but at the end of the day, it's really important. And, and I can see, you know, and I hope you guys don't mind, but I do send those answers out to all of you just so that you're all getting the same information. I want to make sure I'm treating you all the same, all the same. A shout out to the round table for the water rates and Megan and Bob and then the finance committee on the budget and charity. Um, I've, I've seen some really cool changes happening in Wellington. We've got some amazing staff here that um, are, that's kicking butt. It's amazing, so that's my update tonight.
Any from staff communications? And we will move on to board reports. I'm gonna limit this to three minutes as well. I'll start with trustee Mason.
Um, just a quick update from the Laramie County Opioid Abatement Council. Uh, just so everybody's aware, we did uh, just give out nine hundred fifty thousand dollars, five hundred, uh, five hundred fifty of that was to Laramie County Sheriff's Office. Uh, for kind of co-responder expansion as well as keeping, you know, penal off our streets and that sort of thing. Um, as well as Northern Colorado Health Alliance, we awarded uh, four hundred thousand dollars to, so just wanted to say thank you to the opioid. opioid council for getting that done and, uh, look forward to some, uh, improved streets up here as far as that goes.
Trusty Daly?
Uh, first and foremost, I want to say happy Veterans Day and thank you to all those who have served. Um, I know there's a lot more celebration items happening this weekend around town. So I'm very excited with the state, including a flyover on Friday around eleven twenty-five. It's going to be going down Main Street, which was amazing last year. And so I hope you guys can come out um, and help celebrate and then a variety of many other activities will be developed. So happy Veterans Day. I will be meeting this week on Thursday with the Limerick County Solid Waste Group, um, and, uh, topics regarding county and recommended holder licensing. That's one of the things that will be calling up. So that relates to some of the stuff that we're working on here. Um, among many other things with their strategic plan and the role of the council. Um, and then I think that was it. I'm, I'm happy for a major program in Wellington. I'm really excited for us to move forward on that and see what happens this next year. And so, thank you.
Thank you.
Trusty Gator?
Yeah, so just, um, one of the things that was kind of a neat update, um, as Mr. Garcia mentioned, the Colorado and a few other pieces of places talked about the transportation pilot program. And so I actually had Jamie Gaskell from Colorado State University. She works in a transportation department, reached out to me and said they have roughly two hundred employees for CSU that live up in the area and was very interested in being a part of the conversation. Um, whether or not they're able to take advantage of the pilot as it is now. Um, they were like, we definitely want to be a part of figuring out how can we do this? And so that was very encouraging. Um, you know, part of us like to see whether or not to support what other, um, municipalities or organizations or whatever want to be a part of this. So um, that's been really good. I'm going to be working on getting some numbers. Hopefully next time we'll have some numbers for you guys in terms of how much has been utilized. Um, but it has been great to see a lot of the other organizations from the regional to, you can see as you reaching out saying, hey, if you guys can put something like this together that we wouldn't be going at it by ourselves. And so that's huge. And then I did also want to give credit where credit is due. I know I've worked on this, but, uh, Betty Ergon, um, she was instrumental in putting this together. In fact, she is the one who secured the funding. I mean, I put in a little bit of my funding, but compared to what she put in from her nonprofit that funded the entire pilot program. And then Adriana, um, Taro, um, was the other main individual. The two of them have been working with me through this and then Atlas, who is serving as our driver. He's a student at Front Range right now. And he's a great young man. I got to drive into town with him one day. I'm just an awesome guy. So appreciate all the work that they've all done. Yes, I got it together, but they were instrumental in pulling this all off. So very grateful to everyone from all of Jersey.
Trusty Teets?
Um, I want to say thank you to mayor Proton McDonald and trustee Nathan for coming and attending the veterans event. It was a blast. We did have overflow that Carla had mentioned, so we didn't have enough speeding. So probably definitely something that if it is an event that is done again, we probably need to look at more availability of speed. Um, trustee Wegan for also coming by and saying hello and all of the people that did come and attend. The, I think the best part of it was the veteran speakers. Because getting to hear their stories and seeing the other veterans that attended smile when they spoke about certain things and they shared their experiences. I know that two of the vets did make a connection and they plan on getting together to have coffee and they realize that they may or may not have similarities in where they've served. So I think that that's one of those things that makes these kinds of events awesome for the community. We had eighteen volunteers come, including the softball team from the new middle school, high school. Those girls were amazing. So a huge thank you to all of them as they were six on one, definitely serving multiple times, which was great because the excitement was there and, um, they are very interested in a something with the hot cocoa part of the event coming at Christmas as well as the parade if um, middle school, high school doesn't have their own float in the set parade. Um, other than that, I think that I'm just grateful that we are able to have these events. It, it fills my cup. So the volunteering thing in town is a big thing for me and everybody else that is involved. So, thank you.
Trusty Mead? Yeah, first off, I want to thank the CAC for putting that on. That was a great, uh, gathering there. I mean, so many neat old veterans there that I got to talk to a few of them. So I appreciate that. Uh, did, uh, have a Zoom meeting with the behavioral health committee and just give you an update on the Limerick County, the big building that they're building on the south side of Fort Collins. Uh, getting it all dried in now and they're looking at having it fully functional. And starting staffing at the latter part of this coming summer in two thousand twenty-three. And they're looking at their first client coming in on November first of twenty-three. So it's going to be pretty impressive.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Proton?
Thank you so much. Um, I want to thank trustee, uh, Daly for the opportunity to volunteer with her for the zombie crawl. Um, I'm not sure who put that event on down in on Main Street, but that was really cool. It was a lot of fun. It wasn't something I was planning on attending. Um, but as our plans evolved through the evening, it turned out to be just a great opportunity to take my kids out and touring the manor. It was, is, it was pretty awesome. Uh, the Veterans Day event was put on very tastefully and it was very thoughtful and meaningful. And I really enjoyed, um, having the opportunity to embarrass, uh, trustee Mason. Uh, thank you for that. And um, and I want to thank staff so much for all of the hard work that you guys have put in this last year. You guys have gone above and beyond. And it really shows tonight in your presentation of your work. Thank you so much.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, the only thing I have is, uh, we had a workshop, I believe, um, where we were talking about wanting to tour, um, basically the housing catalyst program, so at our last meeting, uh, we discussed that. So that's going to be coming down the pikes here soon. Um, so it'll be an opportunity for us to be able to do that. I requested a date during our weekend so we could all attend. Um, if, if we want. So, uh, that's all I have. I mean, you guys, everybody here doing such a great job with all the boards and things that you're on, uh, it's really cool to see everybody have their highlight and their important stuff. Appreciate that concept. You guys killing it. As always, appreciate you guys. Um, yeah, that is it.
Um, we will be going into executive session and this is where I will queue down.
Um, who is that session, the session, your motion, there's both motion for you. Uh, moving to executive session, CR twenty-four six four two four F one to discuss for a moment, which concerning the county administrator on circumstances with the county administrator in a press meeting as requested by CRS, six four four six four two two three four five two A and two B. The executive session, shooting when they were recorded, it'll be presented many days.
May I, I need a roll call?
Hold on, hold on. It's like my line is so long. Who seconded that one? Trusty Daly, okay, thank you. All right. Uh, roll call, trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trusty Daly?
Yeah.
Trusty Mason?
Yes.
Trusty Teets?
Yeah.
Trusty Regan?